All right, good evening. Welcome to the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's Thursday, August 12th. We have a public hearing tonight for One Anthony Drive. Applicant Richard Miller seeking a variance of the minimum front yard setback. Could I ask the applicants to... Are you able to come to the table? Or... All right. Stephen, do you want to read the legal notice? Thank you.
All set?
Yeah.
Town of Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing Notice. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 12th, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. by the Oxford Zoning Board of Appeals at the Oxford Town Hall, 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. To consider the variance application of Richard Miller for property owned by Richard Miller and Sharon Miller located at One Anthony Drive, Oxford, Mass. Assesses map 46B parcel C04 in the R3 Residential Zoning District. The applicant requests a variance of minimum front yard setback requirement as set forth in Chapter 10, Table 6 of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw, from 25 feet to 21.4 feet to construct an attached garage additional. The applicant can be viewed in the office of the town clerk or land management department during normal hours. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated or submit written comments to the board before the date of the hearing. See masspublications.org for the legal notice. Board of Appeals, Town of Oxford, Oxford, Mass. To the applicants of the Zoning Board of Appeals, you are hereby advised of the following provisions of the Oxford Zoning Bylaws. Appeals to the Zoning Board of Appeals must be filed within 20 days from the date or order of decision which is being appealed specifying the grounds thereof. Variances. In order to grant a variance from the requirements of this bylaw, the Zoning Board of Appeals must find that all of the following conditions have been met. A) There are unique circumstances relating to the soil condition, shape, or topography of such land or structures. B) Especially affect such land or structures but do not generally affect the zoning district in which it is located. C) Literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, but not of a personal nature to the petitioner or appellant. And that D) Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without modifying or substantiating derogating from the purpose of this bylaw. In accordance with Chapter 48, Section 15 of the Mass General Laws, you are hereby advised that any person agreed by the decision of the board relative to this matter must file an appeal as provided for Section 17 of Set Chapter 48 within 20 days after the date of the filing of this decision in the office of the town clerk.
Thank you, Stephen.
You're welcome.
All right, I'm going to go through the package to make sure we all have the same paperwork. And after that, I'll open it up and let you maybe explain verbally what you're trying to do. And then the board will ask questions. And then we'll open it up if there's anybody in the audience that wants to be heard as well. Okay? So we have the application. You're Mr. Miller, right? So we have the application page. It's requesting a variance for the front yard setback from 25 feet to 21.4 for garage addition. You say due to the shape of the frontage of the lot, the variance will not affect the zoning district or create any detriment to the public or surrounding neighborhood. We have the legal notice that Stephen read. We have the abutters list, which is about, almost one and a half pages. We have a copy of the quitclaim deed from March of 2020. We have, I think this is the property record card. Couple of pages describing the structures, the lots, the assessed value. And then this is, what is this? Is this an as-built? Or is this a... Yeah, the septic system showing the proposed garage with the 21.4 feet from the yard. And the next page I have is a blow-up of the same plan specifically showing the area. Then we have the... This would be the kind of the overhead view, the floor plan of the proposed garage showing it with the house. There'll be a breezeway between the two. And then we have the front view showing the garage to the left of the house. And another one that's zoned in more on the garage. We also have the zoning map. And statement that the taxes are current. This will probably come up for questioning, but there's a letter to zoning enforcement officer that was stating that it would encroach the front setback approximately seven feet. I think this was a letter from you, so this was probably an earlier one before you, June 16th. And then there's the letter from the zoning enforcement officer denying and explaining that you would need a variance in order to proceed. We also have a letter from, I'm going to read this into the record, Diane Pedone, Four Anthony Drive, saying, "To whom it may concern, this letter is in response to the letter sent for the public hearing on Thursday, August 12th in regards to the variance application for Richard Miller. I currently zied a cross from Mr. Miller at Four Anthony Drive. I have no objections to the building of his addition, and I hope you consider and approve his request." So that's it for paperwork? Everybody has the same paperwork? All right, so Mr. Miller, if you want to tell us what, you know, maybe more in-depth what you're trying to do?
Yes. We're at Number One Anthony Drive. On the inside of Anthony Drive, it's kind of a circle. This is Wayne Ave. So we are the only house on the odd side. There's only one, me, us, number one. So it's kind of an odd-shaped property. It curves around. There's not much property on the other side, the opposite side where we are. So we would like to add, put in addition, a breezeway off so that we enter out of one of the front rooms into a breezeway to a garage. We also discovered, though, we would have to upgrade the septic because the location of where we wanted to put the garage, there's a pit there, so it would have to be moved. We had a design of the septic. And it, as you can see it, and it... So the original location of where we would like to put it fell within the front setback. But discussing with the septic designer, you know, we have to go in the back of the property. He has to stay a certain distance away from the back and the structure also. So... And it's going to take up a good part of the property on the other side of the garage. So we would like to...
So this plan is the plan for the new septic system?
Yes, that's the new septic system.
Okay. Because I saw the three-bedroom already. When I saw that, I thought, that's what you had.
I do. That is the new, that is the new septic design.
It's the location that's changing.
That's correct. Yes. So because of the shape of the property, you know, we would like to infringe on the setback a little bit so that we can get what we would like in there. This two-car garage with the breezeway and still satisfy the septic design. So that's within... Sweetie, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, it's just the far corner of the garage that would interfere with the setback too, right?
Right. Correct. It's just the corner. Right.
Okay. All right, I'm going to open it up. Stephen, do you want to start this week?
Sure. In the location where you live, is there any of the houses around there that have garages?
One of the...
Yeah, the one on the end that Anthony Drive does.
I mean, just, I mean, your circle, but, you know, we've got a lot of lots here. So as you drive through and get into that Anthony circle, does a lot of houses do have garages?
Well, on Anthony Drive, there's only one, two, three, four, five houses. Six.
Surrounding that, though?
Yes.
Other houses in the neighborhood?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Right on Cypress, there was a big two-car garage put up there with an apartment above.
Yeah, so the whole thing is mainly convenience, having your cars parked outside during the weather and the snowstorms and everything else. Having the garage, you could walk in the garage, walk right in the house, and, I mean, I can understand all that, you know? And plus, the lot size you have, it's not a square lot, it's a half a moon.
Right.
You know, so I look at it and say, you know, why should you be penalized for anything that we developed all this? There's a few in there that are really oddball-shaped.
Yeah.
You know, and it seems to me they just squeezed those in to sell a house lot, you know?
Yeah, it could have been situated a little bit differently if they put a little bit of thought into it.
Yeah. And the system you have here, that's the brand-new septic system.
That is the brand-new septic, yes.
And we're just looking at the far corner, right front corner of that garage. It's just going to infringe on the setback. So the way I'm looking at here, the way the line comes to...
Right, that's the corner.
Yeah.
That would infringe.
Right front corner.
Facing it, it's the left front corner.
Yeah.
Facing it. From the street.
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Just point of clarification, is the new septic already in?
No.
No, okay. All right, Al, did you want to?
I just have a question. Are we allowed to make a site visit under the laws?
If the board, if the... We always have been, Al. It's up to the board if we want it to be.
So we can still do that if we want?
We could if we want, yeah.
And I just want to say that I did make a drive-by visit to the site.
Okay.
But I don't have any questions, gentlemen. I would point out that from the plan of the original approval back in the '70s, he has a larger lot than most of the neighbors, probably the largest lot in the neighborhood. And it is of such a shape that it really causes a problem that he really needs relief.
Okay. Tom?
Okay, one of the questions was, is the septic system in? The new septic system in? And the answer is no, it's not in yet.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask the question, why does the garage and that orientation have to be that way? Why can't it be pulled back into the building setback?
Followed with...
Or out of the building setback?
Because of the line that he's running back, in the back of the house, back of the garage.
The line? What line?
Well, he's putting a new, there's going to be a new septic tank if you're facing the...
Okay, ignoring the septic system.
Okay.
I'm just worried about, or my only question is, why that particular positioning? Why can't you just...
Well, we did actually, because instead of going straight out, we actually angled it, if you look at the drawings, to try to accommodate that. That's what we did.
Is there some reason why you don't want to slide it back into the, into the building, into the building area?
The septic.
Well, the septic.
The septic has nothing to do with it.
Okay.
It's not in yet, so the septic can be taken care of.
Okay.
Okay? And whoever designed this for you should have probably made that, made you aware of that, that the garage will fit in that building, in the build zone. The septic system can be positioned to meet all of the setbacks that need to be done, need to be met. The only things that might be affected a little bit are the existing sheds. Now, are they portable sheds?
Yes.
Okay, so they can be moved?
Yeah.
If they needed to.
Yeah, we've, yes.
Okay. A forklift or somebody could come in and lift them up and move.
That's correct.
Okay, that answers all of my questions then.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I had actually one question. When you were going through the paperwork, you talked about the tax, showing that taxes are paid up to date?
Yes.
Which form is that? Because I don't see that.
That was a separate, in mind, it was, everything was stapled together except for this one. Some colors, some yellow, blue, and green. It says current.
Okay, thank you.
If I may discontinue, I just wanted to follow up on his question. I didn't get the answer, I wanted to finish answering. Part of these, you know, we're trying to make the aesthetics of the house at least look good too for the surrounding neighborhood by pushing it back. You know, because we're angling it too and pushing it back, it just didn't seem that good either doing that. So I took that into consideration.
Okay. So your...
Because we needed access. We're trying to make access from the...
Your main reason then is aesthetics? Then more than anything else?
That's not the main reason.
Well...
I'm just saying, I'm just giving you reasons.
Okay, that's another reason then.
You know?
Okay. That's what I'm asking.
Because we're trying, we're trying to get access from our existing house, and we can only come through and want, to make it feasible on the front side of it. But because it's angled, we need to try to keep the house up in that area to put a door in, you know?
All set, Tom? Or you look like you're forming a question?
No.
All set for now?
I'm all set for now.
Okay.
By the way, I guess, am I reading this correctly? This is a 30 by 36 garage?
Yes.
It's a good-sized garage.
Mm-hmm.
It's like 25% bigger than the average garage, or 30% bigger than the average garage. So, okay.
We tied it, and I want to be able to work it. And we're doing a lot of work, and I'm cutting, doing all my, bringing all my stuff outside.
That's exactly right. You've got to put your stuff out there, not any of your wife's things. Your stuff.
Just the car.
Her car, number one.
Okay.
All right, Dan?
All right, thank you. Thank you for coming in. Thanks for the paperwork. There's a lot of information here. You've done your homework, which is great. It helps us. I did drive by the house as well. You can see the constraints you kind of have, so it kind of makes sense. Now, people talked about if you put the septic in already, will it go in at the same time? Is that how it will be done, all the work all at the same time?
That's what we're, that's what we're hoping for.
And you put another driveway in, so you'd have two separate driveways? Are you going to eliminate that one you currently have? Or what?
Yeah, we, right now, we're just going to leave it the way it is.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dan.
Because there's a back door over there, and family wants to park there.
Understood. I was just asking. I just drove by. I think the way it's plotted out and you did your work, I appreciate that. It definitely helps us.
Okay, thanks. So I did hear it stated, and I see it on the plan, that it is the front left corner from the street that is what encroaches in the setback. I think I understand what you're saying is that originally you had the garage planned to be parallel with the house?
Almost parallel, yeah. And that was way too...
How you pulled it back in an angle to try and...
Yeah, we angled it off, tried to pull it back a little bit more too.
Okay. I did drive by myself also. Is that fence along the back, is that yours, the fence on the back of the side?
No.
No? There was fence to your left side and to the back?
Just to the, just to the back.
To the back?
We're actually putting a fence up though, on the other side, and we'd like to put one up there too at some point.
And I noticed the tractor, is that?
That's the neighbor.
The next neighbor. So that's the neighbor's land, that's kind of the line, the property line.
Yeah, the line is right there, because we had it surveyed, and it's right at the back of his trailer.
Okay. Yeah, the other questions I had seemed to be, they've all been asked and answered, so, anybody have any follow-on questions? Go ahead, Stephen.
I can understand your positioning of that garage, so if you look at this from a top view, you look at the house and you look at the garage, they're all in line sequence with each other. You know, if you brought the garage further back, it's going to offset it, but then again, it might have some bearing on that mudroom.
Mm-hmm.
So I agree with, agree why the way it's positioned now, because I'm looking directly down on top of it, and it... And I try to view if I was standing in front of the house, and it's going to have like a half-moon type effect instead of one of these.
Right.
You know, so...
Right.
I'm all set.
Okay. No one from the audience? Is there anything else you would like to add? If not, we'll...
No.
Okay. All right, so at this point, I'm going to look for a motion to close the public hearing. And then there'll be no more input from the audience, and then we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to close.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Either Al or Dan. Maybe Al was first.
I'm not sure who was first.
Let's say, I think Al was first.
Okay.
He wins.
Al gets it.
Okay. And now a vote, and Dan's participating, so a vote on closing the public hearing. Dan?
Yes.
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 Yes, okay. All right, at this point, we'd like to entertain a motion based on the applicant's request to approve or deny.
We're going to have discussion first or after?
We could have discussion first. Maybe that's easier instead of going back and doing all the amendments and...
One of the things I saw, 21.4 feet, I hate to see somebody put something down and then have someone go and measure. I would suggest that we make it 20 feet.
So five feet of relief.
In the little room for being off a foot or so. It might have an overhang or something.
Sure. So you're suggesting five feet of relief to...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'd be okay with that.
I would. It's better to pick it up now instead of leaving.
Oh, actually, I can't ask the applicant, but, yeah. That's seven feet. That earlier letter said seven feet. But the plan shows 21.4, so, okay. Any other discussion? Comments?
It shows 21.4, and the setback line is 25?
Correct.
So they're looking for 3.6 feet of relief.
Right, and Al's proposing that if he was going to grant relief, he would round it to five.
And you want to amend it to five. Is the applicant happy with that?
Don't think they would have.
Yes.
We can't ask for their input, right? We've closed the public hearing, but I don't see how someone would be upset with getting extra relief.
Someone help him. There's always somebody that has an overhang or something they didn't rely on or get the measurement. I hate to see him have to come back for a few inches.
Don't we always do plus or minus one?
Yeah, we did. Quite a few times we did that.
I don't know if that's legal though. I mean, do we word it that way, plus or minus one, or do we...
I don't think so.
Okay.
There are often times when you will round up.
Rounding off is one thing, but to give a sliding rule, that's, I think, is not appropriate.
Rounding up is four feet of relief, so, again, I'm... If I was, if I was being granted relief, I'd be happier with five than four or 3.6, in my opinion. Any other thoughts on that, or...
I agree. Gives you that room of error. You know, you could turn around and say, I should have turned around and made it five and added four because we have this here. A couple of times that he put a footing in and then started building it, and then, oh, wait a minute, you know?
That's what the engineers and surveyors are for, Steve.
Yeah, nobody's ever...
They're supposed to go in if it's that tight.
No one's ever accurate.
Well, if they're, let's put it this way. If it's an engineer, if it's a land surveyor that's stamping the plan...
It's their plus or minus.
His degree of accuracy is one foot in three miles? Am I right?
They're fairly accurate.
It's one foot in three miles. That's the degree of accuracy. So, one of the things that does happen, it should happen on tight situations like this, is the surveyor has to be involved in setting the footings. They typically will go down there and set the footings. Or the foundation guy will set the footings, and the, and the surveyor will go down and put a pin in the footing and tell them that's as close as you can go. That's the spot. And they'll build the foundation on top of that.
Off the top of the pin.
Off the pins.
Oh, yeah.
So are you opposed to the five feet of relief, or... I know, it seems like you're struggling with it, but...
I am struggling with it, but knowing the neighborhood with all the different things that are going on in that neighborhood, and on top of looking at this plan showing that the rear part of the building is already in the setback on the rear...
Is that all gravel or sand down there?
It's all standard gravel.
Earth moves. You have a little earthquake, and all of a sudden, we're off about 1/2 foot.
Yeah. Doesn't move four or five feet still.
Yeah.
But, I mean, if that's what the, if the board wants to grant the five-foot or four-foot, whatever you want, I'll go along with whatever you want.
Okay.
Just to address some of Tom's... A lot of these things were put in prior to 1970 adoption of zoning. So I couldn't tell when they were. I noticed those things that you mentioned, but I couldn't tell whether they were original from the original zoning, which was substantially smaller.
The deed's supposed to be in the package, right? He'll tell you the date that it was set up.
Oh.
Yeah, the deed, the version plan. And it was...
It's just a...
Oh, I know, I got on the board in 1970.
This was 1983.
And we just put in the thing.
Is that...
But the buildings could have been there. The plan was approved in 19, before 1970.
Excuse me?
So I couldn't tell when these buildings were actually put there.
The house, according to the assessor field card, the house was built in 1975, which predates 1987.
So they're also carryover from the original.
All right, well, like I say, knowing the neighborhood too.
So I didn't know whether the original ones, and that's why I drove down there to see. It looks like what's proposed is going to improve the value of all the houses in the neighborhood, basically. That's why.
Originally, it'd be just 3.6, so we could split in, just go to the four feet.
I don't think they were arguing about that.
No?
No. They were just talking. I think the time, the time the house was built.
My reasoning and my rationale for agreeing to it, because it's already in non-conforming, non-conformance on the rear.
Yeah.
We believe, I believe it is, according to the surveyor.
Yeah.
So what's another boo-boo?
All right, well, someone, someone would need to make a motion with the findings, you know, what you believe we've seen tonight.
Make the motion. Grant it five feet.
I'd like to make a motion that we grant relief of five feet so that the setback from the road is 20 feet. Part of my motion is that the rules that we read require the odd shape of this lot is part of it. Well, maybe that will come up in the discussion. I'll just make the motion to grant the relief.
And I'll start it. Okay. I don't need any discussion unless anybody else does.
I think we have to specify that it met because of the odd shape, and if anything comes up, that this lot needs relief because of the odd shape of that.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that.
And the size of the things in the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think you mentioned that.
Size of the other lots in the neighborhood. It's one of the largest lots in the area, but it's shaped so funny that it really needs relief.
Yeah, I mean, you mentioned, actually, you said odd shape when you were making